This is a voluntary annexation request for parcel identification number 8712671695 and 8712673657. Brandon, will you come up, please?
So, we've got, we've got some information referenced this. About a year ago, the property owners submitted a request for annexation for the gas station property, looking on 64. There are two parcels that this business is stretched across, and they are within the, within one mile, or I think they're about .87 mile outside. It was presented to the planning board. They reviewed it, made a recommendation for the annexation, and then it was duly noticed for the public hearing, and we have prepared for the assumption that it would be approved. We've got the paperwork appropriately ready for that. There's not really a whole lot to it as far as just the, for the business needs. I think that the primary desire was to be able to sell alcohol beverages at the gas station, which is the reason why they were wanting to annex them. We did the research on it, confirmed the ownership, everything was valid on that end, that we can locate, and everything appears to be in order. We did get consent from the county. They have no issue whatsoever with this property being annexed. The county manager relayed that to me directly. Did y'all have any questions or anything? I'm not sure if there's someone from, if there's someone here from that, so I can let them come up, speak, talk about a little bit, and then I can come back forward.
Is this a property owner?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did you say it was a satellite?
It is a satellite annexation, yes, sir.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Brandon?
This is just for the gas station?
Yes, ma'am. This is just for the gas station. So, I think you, I think you have a map in there, but I can, I can approach, I can just show you specifically the two parcels in question. So, this parcel here, where this part of the gas station, and this parcel here, that little L shape there. This is not going to be brought in, it's just these two records.
Does anybody else have any questions for Brandon? In that case, sir, would you like to come up? Please state your name for the record.
It's Stephen Majors.
Mr. Majors, and what is your position with that comment?
I'm the president of High Falls, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Oh, no, we're just, we're looking forward to it, you know, especially with the new project with speed down the street. We have probably three or four people a day coming in there. They're in disbelief that Randolph County's dry all the time, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, it helps with every, all the sales as well.
Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Majors? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Majors, you may go ahead and sit down. Thank you.
So, what I'll do, yeah, I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, just so you have that information, and then we'll have basically a consistency statement that we can go through and answer those questions, and it'll have you all make a vote to answer those questions for those two to go through. So, the ordinance is pretty much identical between the two ordinances. I have to do a separate one for each parcel ID number. The only difference is obviously the actual parcel ID. But, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Ramsey in North Carolina, whereas the Ramsey City Council has received a petition in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 168-58.1 to annex the area described below, and whereas the Ramsey City Council has requested the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition, and whereas the town clerk has certified the sufficiency of the petition, and the public hearing on question of this annexation was held at the Ramsey City Council Chambers on, at 6:30 PM on March 21, 2023, whereas the Ramsey City Council finds the petition meets the requirements of North Carolina General Statute 168-58.1D to wit, the nearest point of proposed satellite corporate limits is not more than three miles away from the corporate limits of the town. No point of proposed satellite corporate limits is closer to another municipality than to the town. There are described ends is so situated that the town will be able to provide the same services within the proposed satellite corporate limits as it provides to the primary corporate limits. No subdivision, as defined in North Carolina General Statute 168-376, will be fragmented by proposed annexations. The town of Ramsey is exempt from the 10% world-renowned satellite annexation. Whereas the Ramsey City Council further finds the petition as otherwise valid, and that the public health, safety, and welfare of the town and proposed annexation be served by annexing the area described. Now therefore, being ordained by the Ramsey City Council, Section 1, by virtue of the authority granted in North Carolina General Statute 168-58.2, the following described non-contiguous territories hereby annexed and a part of the town of Ramsey as described. I'll defer to the attorney. Do I need to read verbatim the, that location?
No.
Okay.
Because it goes into two pages.
Yeah, you can give it that.
Okay.
So, the, the address for this parcel is...
Is that 8112 Highway 6?
Yes, 8112 US Highway 64.
East.
And I think east, yes.
Petition sets forth the parcel numbers.
That's correct, yes. Section 2, upon and after March 21, 2023, the above-described territory and its citizens, which are already living there, and property shall be subject to all debts, laws, ordinances, and regulations enforced in the town of Ramsey, which our territory shall be subject to municipal taxes according to North Carolina General Statute 168-58.10. Section 3, the mayor of the town of Ramsey shall cause to be recorded in the office of the registered deeds of Randolph County, in the office of the Secretary of State in Raleigh, North Carolina, an accurate map of annexed territory described in Section 1 above, together with a duly-certified copy of this ordinance. Such map shall also be delivered to the county board of elections as required by the North Carolina General Statute 168-288.1. Section 4, notice of adoption of this ordinance shall be published once, following the effective date of annexation, the newspaper having general circulation in the town of Ramsey duly adopted this 21st day of March 2023, and it's got a section for the mayor to sign and attest by the town clerk. That's copy verbatim for both, with the exception of the description of the locations. In addition to both of those, we have a certificate of sufficiency by the town clerk. This is the same. The only thing that changes is the, the address. The annexation petition to the town council, the town of Ramsey, North Carolina, I, Carol Lakeers, town clerk, be hereby certified that I investigated the annexation petition attached here, too, and have found, as a fact, that said petition is signed by all the real property lying in the area described there, in accordance with NCGS 168-71, as amended in witness thereof, I have unto you, set my hand in effect, the seal of the town of Ramsey, North Carolina, this 21st day of March 2023. The final portion of this will be the consistency statement. So, I will read these, and we'll do each individual one for this. So, the first will be the consistency statement, voluntary annexation, voluntary annexation property identified as Randolph County, excuse me, Randolph County tax records, that's pin 8712673657. That specifically will be the back portion. It has no physical address, but that is the back portion. The request, and I'll read through this, and then we can go through. So, the request is or is not consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the town of Ramsey because the proposed annexation is consistent with the Ramsey strategy of locating and accommodating growth within logical locations in the planning area to enhance the return on investment and feasibility. This request is or is not reasonable in the public interest because the proposed zoning is consistent with adjacent zoning development. We can check into Ramsey zoning ordinance, Ramsey Land Use Plan, Land Development Plan, Ramsey Propaganda Plan. Only therefore, Ramsey City Council does or does not consider this action to be reasonable, and in the public interest, and either approves or denies this request. So, the three questions that we have is, is this requ, the request is or is not consistent with objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the town of Ramsey because the proposed annexation is consistent with Ramsey's strategy of locating or accommodating growth within logical locations in the planning area to enhance the return on investment and feasibility. So, that is a, an is or a is not. So, I would need a motion and a vote on that.
I think we need to do that in...
That would be in, okay.
It'll be during the bottom.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So, that's, that's the paperwork that we've got for these two. So, that is what we'll consider for these. If you have any questions?
Can you put that up here, so when they make the motion, they can reference it?
Definitely, yes.
Thank you. In that case, we're going to close that public hearing, and we're going to move into the public hearing for the adoption of adult gaming established ordinance. Brandon, don't go too far away.
So, there were some issues and some concerns over the adult gaming establishments, commonly known as fish tables, adult walkies. Basically, the, the concept of this is individuals will pay for the credits or time, and through some legal mechanism, have found a way to potentially gamble without technically gambling by law. Over the years, North Carolina General Statute regulated these facilities and criminalized them, and adjustments were made, and several changes were made to the law, and eventually, the state got to the point where, okay, we're no longer going to continue to update a law based off of these minor changes that are being made, so that it's up to each municipality to go ahead and basically police themselves as to if they want to regulate it and how indefinitely they want to regulate it. I had prepared an ordinance for this regulation that does not prohibit the actual use, but it does regulate it pretty, pretty stringently. So, when you, when you go into zoning, when you start looking at regulation, it's frowned upon really completely outlaw certain things. You don't want to open up that Pandora's box when it comes to just completely outlawing things. So, you look at where the impact that it would have, and where it would be best suited at. So, I will go quickly through this process. So, adult gaming establishment, initially, the sections, you have one definitions, two licenses required, three criminal history checks authorized, four disqualifications, five prohibited conduct, six rules of operation, seven removal to another location, and eight revocation of license. Sites of statutory reference, GS 168-181 and 168-194. Under the definitions, the adult gaming establishment also referred to as a game room, it is any place of business that operates mechanical games, or paid devices, or tables for which charge is made, either directly or indirectly. Examples of adult gaming establishments by way of illustration and not limitation include electronic gaming operations, pool room, billiard halls, amusement centers, video game rooms, convenience stores, and the like. These uses are also regulated by Ramsey Unified Development ordinance. So, just to clarify on this, this doesn't mean that a pool hall is going to be an adult gaming establishment. What that means is that if you have that type of operation, and you put one of the adult establishment games in there, then it has to immediately fall under this regulation. If you have a convenience store, and you decide, you know what, we want to put one of these gaming consoles in our convenience store, then you're automatically regulated by this ordinance because of that. Operator, any person, corporation, or other business entity that owns and or operates a game room for purposes of the criminal records, background check, the operator shall be the person or persons who have primary ownership and control of the business, as well as any person or persons who has primary responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the business. This includes all employees. So, this basically, anyone who either owns it or works there has to go through, provide the town with a copy of a clear background check, that they are not going to be restricted based off of these ordinance. License required. So, we have an A, B, C, D, and E here. A, every operator of a game room shall apply for and obtain a game room license from the town council, where they're designated to operate a game room. The application for a license shall be made upon the forms provided by the town clerk or the designated. We can go through this with a normal zoning compliance form, and you can all, you can make the determination as if it's something that you want to hear, and it comes before you, or one of the designees can issue this permit out.
Brandon, I don't think you have to read this whole thing.
Okay. If you don't want me to, that, that's completely fine.
Has the board had an opportunity to review it?
Okay.
And are you, are you sufficient, satisfied with what is in here?
Yes.
Then, I don't think it's necessary for you to read it.
And then, well, for this, we'll have the consistency statement as well, and we'll have those same three questions for this.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the adult gaming establishment? Sir, if you would, please come forward.
This one will be in the gas station? Everybody should run.
No, sir.
No.
Where, is it, where's it?
Can you please come forward, introduce yourself?
This is, I can't tell by video, where's the parcel?
Okay, this, this is not a specific parcel. This is a separate public hearing than the one we originally had. This is our second public hearing. So, the first one was about that parcel located just outside of town, which...
Well, I heard there'd be a, being sold there, right? This is the gas station.
Correct, correct. This is a separate issue. This is a separate...
This is like sweepstakes and...
This one will be in that gas station as well?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay.
This is a new proposed town ordinance.
For the whole town? I got you.
The clamping down on it, be one square mile...
You want to allow it in or not allow it?
One square mile from adult game. It's a resident school or place of worship.
That's my question.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Does the board have a sufficient information to close this public hearing? In that case, we'll close this public hearing also, and we'll go ahead and open up our meeting. We'll do the call to order with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, would just come tonight and say bless us, Lord, tonight as we do this meeting, Lord. Lord, just have us do your will, Lord. Watch and protect each and every one of us, Lord, as we do your will, Lord. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing. Okay.
I make a motion, we amend the agenda to add biometrics to Jason right after the Wooton Progress Meeting update.
Now, what number is that, please?
I guess we put it 17B.
17B? Biometrics? So, we've got a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
First and second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Okay. At this time, I'd like to state that Commissioner Crampford is out, and he has been excused from this meeting today. We'll move to the consent agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at everything in the consent agenda? And if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Public comment cur, period, Mr. McMurray? Thought you were going to be here all night. I think you should stay.
I have to. My name's David McMurray, and I have had water issues for over a year, well over a year. And the water issues are not on my side of the meter. And, and I've did, I've, I've tried everything, everything in my toolbox. And so, I'm not going to take up a lot of y'all's time, but I need to plead my case, because I need some help. It's bad when you can't, when you have to make sure that you go polish your washing machine so that you can take a shower, or that you have to turn the sink off when you're trying to brush your teeth, to turn around and flush the toilet, or the toilet won't fill up. That's not right. I'm, I'm paying full price for a service that I'm getting, not even half. It's just wrong. It's just absolutely wrong. I've had the water department out there on multiple occasions. They've told me what the problem is. They said, it's our line. They told me this on numerous occasions, that it's our line beating your meter. It goes through this se, section of timber here. It's been in since the 40s. It's clogged up, and you're not getting the volume. And so, you know, right's right and wrong's wrong. And, and this is wrong for this town, not to fulfill their obligation by sending me my water to my meter. Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have made all kinds of different proposals. I don't care if you leave, the meter is 24 feet from my house. The town had an opportunity about three years ago, or maybe four.
I think it was a little bit longer than that, yeah.
Uh, under the, I don't even know who the water commissioner is now, but it was under the, I don't even remember his name.
It was under the former administration.
Okay, whatever that means. But, he, he, yeah, chief. Because I was, I tried to do the right thing by the time, and I was fixing the poor concrete porches around that house, and the meter was right against the house, which is great for me, great. But, I, I said, you know what, I'm going to go to the town, and I'm going to tell them, look, I'm fixing the poor concrete here. Would y'all like to move this meter, so that if something happens to your part of the line, you don't end up having to saw concrete and then fix my concrete like it was before you had to saw it? And that turned into a huge debacle, because he came out there and demanding this, and going to call the, the city's attorney, and, and I said, I finally told him, I said, look, let's see, you can get in your car, get off my property. I mean, come out there and talk to me like that on my property, when I'm trying to do the right thing. So, we got beyond that. He decided that he would move it to where it's 24 feet off my house. Well, that meter is inside a fence with an electronic gate that the town is not going to be able to get to unless I'm there, and they're going to have to call and tap me in advance, because I have dogs that I need to secure before they can get in there. And I'm going to have to be there to, to do the code on the gate. So, the meter is not accessible by the town. I tried to get him at that time to just do like everybody else, put my meter at the right of way, on the right of way, so it was easily accessible by the town, and to run me a line back in there to the house.
And you understand, cities, line is usually in the right of way, or whatever, from the tap to the house is responsibility to homeowners.
But I didn't put it where it was originally.
I understand, but I'm just telling you.
So, that's, I understand that.
You're a plumber.
I understand that, but I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to move that. I am not going to pay to move a water meter that y'all have installed twice in an unreasonable location. I'm not going to do it. So, I'm here to ask the town to get me the water to my meter, where y'all put the meter. I didn't request it be put there. I requested it be put at the right of way. The town chose to put it where it's at. That's not my fault. I offered to let them put it at the right of way, but I didn't install the meter where it was originally. I didn't install the meter where it is now.
And you're saying a lot of pressure has been reduced since this move?
Yes. And it's on a line that comes out of the city and runs through grown timber that is, that they said was put in in the 40s. It comes from another development over here beside me. It don't even come off of 22. Comes off another development over here, and it's, and it's, they, they told me, but what problem is our line? And I said, well, then fix it. Well, town won't. And, and I've had the mayor out there, and she said she came back and proposed it to y'all, and y'all voted it down. So, I'm just here to show you where the meter's at. That's the whole purpose of this plat, is to give you an idea. Now, this is not the scale, but the meter is, if you consider three mile depth, and it's scribbling down there. It's, I just measured it before I came over here. It's 24 feet off my house. But, all this is fenced. Six acre, that, that six acre piece is all fenced in.
I think before Commissioner McIntosh resigned, he had a plan, and Jason, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, to do some work there as part of the upcoming grant, but I don't believe that they've determined that they can go ahead and run the line through your property. Is that correct, Jason?
Right. So, currently, where he's tapped on off the 40, he's tapped into a two-inch water line. So, with this that's come off the two-inch water line, that's, that's the reason for the pressure. There is an eight inch that runs out in front of the property on 22, but in the, in the grant for the water replacement, though, that two-inch line is being replaced with a six-inch line of course you. So, once that's replaced, it'll be tapped into a six-inch line, which should, you know...
Should alleviate the, the water pressure problem. So, currently, we're working in getting the grant together. We don't have the funds yet, and I know patience is something that you're lacking right now, because you've been dealing with this for...
Over a year.
Yes. But, the town is working on that, and they have set that in as part of the work, when the grant starts working, and we receive the funds.
And, and this is what I've heard for months and months and months. And it doesn't help me and my family to alleviate our water issues.
And, and the water issues in our town are substantial.
And I'm not sure, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not sure that that's going to fix me, because, see, there's a few hundred feet of line where my major... there's a few hundred feet of line where my major, this nineteen forties line that runs through timber. A big timber. And so I don't know. I'm not a water guy.
Yeah, so that's, that's where, you know, once, once the six inches ends, we still have this issue, we have to change the six inch line. That's where, you know, we have to revisit it, you know, we come in and replace that from the meter to the line.
Again, I don't care where y'all put the meter. It doesn't matter to me. I don't care if you leave it right where it's at and just, I just need water. I thought it would be a simple solution because it's as much water line for y'all to move the meter to, to the, to twenty-two and run me a water line back to the house as it is for y'all to run a new water line into my meter. I mean, it's six, one half dozen of them. So what I'm telling you is, is whichever way y'all wanna do it, I don't care. I just need water. But if you move it out there, I ain't paying to run it to the house. I've already hooked in the vials off the meter y'all installed, and I'm not gonna do it again. I mean, I'll tie the two lines together, but I'm not gonna run it again. So if you, if you don't wanna move the meter, then I just need the water fixed, you know? I just, I just need water. I mean, I got dogs that try to water. You can't even wash a car at my house. I go to water my chickens, and I have to, and I have to hold the hose right over the pot, right over the bucket to fill it up. I mean, it, it won't squirt from me to you. It's ridiculous. And, and when I have to holler at my teenager and say, look, stay out of the bathroom. I need to take a shower, then I, this is, this is crazy. This is crazy, and it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And I, and I just feel like that the town is doing it just because they can continue to procrastinate because they're a government agency. I've worked for the government nearly all my whole life, and I know how the government works. And, and I'm not gonna throw a whole lot of, you know, I'm not gonna go to hiring attorneys and throw in a whole lot of money just to get the wheels moving so I can have water. I'm just, I'm just asking for y'all to do what's right. That's all I'm asking for, is for somebody in this world to do what's right instead of shifting the blame and, and, and making their own self-cosy. That's, that's all I ask for, is just do what's right. That's, that's all I want, just to come, hopefully, hopefully in small-town America, there are people that will do what's right. That's all I want.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray.
Thank you for your time.
Planning and zoning code enforcement? At this time, and considering the public hearings that we had earlier, what is the board's pleasure regarding the annexation, voluntary annexation for the pins eight seven one two six seven one six nine five and eight seven one two six seven three six five?
A motion will go ahead and approve the annexation based on those three questions.
That's what they've got.
Okay, so this is a consistency segment, and you're melting. You have to, the request is or isn't consistent, or is?
I make a motion that the request is consistent. The request is reasonable in all three of our Ramsor zoning ordinance, Ramsor land use plan, and Ramsor comprehensive plan.
In the last portion.
And therefore, the council does consider this action to be reasonable in, in public interest and approves this request on both.
So that was the motion. Is there a second?
No second.
So you have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? There's no one opposed. So you've got one for this parcel ID and one for this parcel ID. Carol, the first one, reference parcel ID eight seven one two six seven three six five seven.
I make a motion for parcel number eight seven one two six seven one six nine five. This request is consistent. The request is reasonable with our zoning ordinance, land use plan, and comprehensive plan, and therefore, the Ramsor council does consider this action reasonable in the public interest and approves this request.
So a motion to approve it. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? So let's move to the consistency statement for the adult gaming establishment ordinance. So do you wanna do the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt, or for the adoption of the adult gaming establishment.
So you have to reference all of that.
And I make that motion based off the request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the town commissioner, town of Ramsor, sorry. And the request is reasonable in public interest, in the public interest. And it does consider this, excuse me, therefore, the Ramsor Town Council does consider this action to be reasonable and in the public interest and approves this request.
It is consistent with the Ramsor zoning ordinance, the Ramsor land use plan, and the Ramsor comprehensive plan. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Business zoning permits?
Yeah, so a question came about, I think, Mary, you kind of spearheaded the question. So when I came on board, I've basically been reviewing the permits that were either in backlog or permit applications that are put towards. Several years ago, the state basically took away town's ability to charge for business licenses and took away that business license. The, I reviewed our ordinance. There's nothing specifically in our ordinance that states if you wanna open a business that you have to get a zoning permit to open that business. As long as you're, you know, if it's a pre-existing structure, it's a business district, something that's permissible, you're not required necessarily to get a permit for it, but it's also a broad enough brush that you could articulate that, yes, you, you could need to get a permit for that. And speaking with the town clerk, my question to her was, how did this come about where we started doing this originally? Was it something that the council advised, or was it something someone else? And she advised that basically the previous planner is who advised her that this was the policy that we needed to go for. These permits, credit for my bluder, a hundred and fifty dollar permits is the fee associated. So basically, as of right now, the consistency is that if you want to open a business, let's say it's a strip mall area, you wanna put in just a little, you know, five and dime shop, you've got to pay a hundred and fifty dollars to get a zoning permit to say, yes, what we wanna do is permissible. I wanted to present it to you all just to get your direction on it and make it official because it's really y'all's decision as to how you want us to go. I think technically, we could do it either way, but since it wasn't something from the direction of the council previously, I just wanted to get some clarification. So it's something that either we could stop doing and we can just let people know, hey, this is a permissible use and you're, you're good to go unless there's other things that actually require zoning permits, or we continue to do this and it's based off of your direction versus just something else.
Brandon, how many do you know, or Carol, how many of these have we required? And this is, from my understanding, this is not a change of use. This is the same establishment in the same address. It's just that you're requesting that they fill out a zoning application to open the same type of business.
Correct. So, yeah, so when somebody comes in and does that, they typically, their first step is to speak with the town clerk. And that was her understanding of the direction that they were previously doing. Since I've been here doing permits, I've probably approved four or five permits, I think, if you reference to that. That was not a change of use. That was not, it was just someone coming in, looking at, planning on opening a business. And I think the last one that we did was a gas station, four a gas station. And that's when the question got proposed, well, why are we doing this? And when I asked the town clerk, why are we doing this, it was, well, this is just because of the power's been, been done previously. So that's why I wanted to go ahead and bring it before you all and get actual direction. My personal opinion on it is I don't think we need to do it. I don't think that there needs to be any regulation on that. If there's no change of use, if there's nothing that would require a permit, I don't think we should force that upon someone to do. But again, the way the ordinance is written, it's broad enough that you can interpret that, that you could. But, you know, a lot of towns have gotten, tried to get creative with the business license. You can still issue business licenses, you just can't charge for them. So if it's an issue of we wanted to just keep track of new businesses coming to town just so we can be aware of it, then we could go through that process without actually, you know, charging a fee for the permit. I just don't see where doing that warrants a hundred and fifty dollar permit fee when there's no change of use. There's nothing that warrants anything other than, you know, it's in the business district, it's on our list of, you know, table of permissible uses, that it's a permissible use, and then that's all we view it, and it's good to go.
I've talked with two realtors, a former member of our board, and somebody that serves in economic development capacity. And all of them had the same understanding that I had, that unless it's a change of use and we actually need to change the zoning, then it feel it was required. That being said, I understand it's the board's decision. And my example was, is if you have a business downtown and one retail establishment moves out, another one moves in, it's still a retail establishment that's in the permitted uses. Why are we charging a business a hundred and fifty dollars when it's already zoned that way?
Right. And I'll say this too, in, in the other twenty towns that we work in, we don't do this in any of the other towns. The only time that we're doing a permit for something is if there's a valid reason for a permit. We'll let them know, hey, you're fine. You don't need to do a permit. This isn't something that's permitted, and you're, you're good to go.
So it's not actually an ordinance on the books right now. It was just a.
An interpretation.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance, yes. And I think it's a safer interpretation to say we don't need to do it. But you could argue, you know, an interpretation of potentially why it was being done before. But because it, my understanding, it had never been brought before the council, this is a question that I wanted your direction on before we continue to implement this, since it's not something that I implemented or the town clerk implemented on our own.
So in that case, does the board want to discuss this issue?
I agree. I don't think we should be charging them.
I mean, if it's the same business going back in there, why, that's, it's not changing. The business is not changing. I don't think we should charge for it.
Well, and you wanna be consistent with other towns, and if they're not doing it, why? What are we gonna benefit from doing it? So, Jason?
I agree.
Ma'am?
The only question I had that I did present, Brandon, was retail to retail, yes, it was retail to retail. But there are some not permitted uses for retail that if we didn't know what was going into a business, we need to have some, something needs to be told us. Explain that, what we talked about.
So there's, there's kind of two different ways to look at it. One, most of the time, people who are interested in opening a business are coming into town. And we, they're talking with us, and we're letting them know that, yes, this is able to go in. For the instance, or for the individual who doesn't necessarily do that and just, you know, over the weekend pops up a, you know, a store or, you know, whatever it is, that would not be an approved use, that would be no different than our normal code enforcement and zoning enforcement procedures. At that point, we would basically, you know, let them know that they're in violation of it. They need to shut it down. And I've done this, we've done this in numerous locations, referenced things, the same way in the game room, you know, you pass the game ordinance tonight. If one opens up in a strip mall area, we're gonna, you know, have to shut it down and close it. We can just go through those procedures. That's by law. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a list where like, well, you have to check this because we have to give you permission to do it. And we could still do that permitting process if we wanted to, just basically for peace of mind, so that if somebody comes out and says, hey, you know, this isn't allowed to do it, we can give. My thing is just charging somebody a hundred and fifty dollars if you wanted to open a business in town. But realistically, if they're in violation of something, the zoning ordinance or anything else, we're gonna take action on that pretty much right away.
Do most people that want to open a business in town, do they reach out to the town hall and then you, you proceed to give them Brandon's number? Not always. There's some times where they just slide in and open it up.
And then we've dealt with that before on, you know, on the code enforcement side, the zoning enforcement side of things that reports came in or complaints came in, and we've addressed that with them. I don't think we've had anything that we've had to shut a business down yet, but we've had some zoning violations that we've had to have corrected.
Is that, is that the violations, like, where they say they're gonna open up one thing and then it ends up being something else?
Well, I guess.
They're gonna make it into something else.
Yeah, one of the most recent ones would be like, you know, the lighting or something from a smoke shop or something like that. Those were some zoning issues that we had to deal with. Basically, what you, so in our zoning ordinance, we almost refer to it as a table of permissible uses. And it's got a very detailed list of things that are permissible in certain zoning issues. And there are certain things that are not. Just an example, the ordinance that you passed tonight restricts the game room establishment to the industrial zone. So if, if somebody's just in a normal business zone and they decide, oh, we're gonna open that up, if they tried to come get a permit from us, we, you know, and they started talking to us about it, we would inform them that, no, you can't do it. As of right now, the way it's operating, if they paid the fee and do whatever, we would deny the permit and let them know, hey, you're not allowed to do this. But if they just set up shop over the weekend, nobody was so wise, or next thing, you know, they're, they're running a business, we would go in, inform them that they are in violation, that they need to, basically, the equivalent of a stop and report, that they need to shut down. And then we would go through the legal process that we needed to go through. Most of your businesses that fall within our business district are gonna be a permissible use. It's not something that, even if it's a change of use, meaning a different type of store, you know, a nail salon versus a clothing store, that's still not necessarily something that, you're not changing the zoning district. It's still something that is a permissible use in that. So really, what this does is this gets us to where we're not issuing a permit purely because you're wanting to open a business. We're issuing a permit because you're needing to do something that requires a zoning permit from the county to then issue building permits. So it, it helps, it, it just restricts it to where now you're required to have it versus you really don't need a permit for this. We're just going through the procedures again.
Does anybody else have any more questions? Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you. So we'll move forward at that point, I guess, under y'all's direction to, we won't be doing any more of those, of those permits. We'll just answer those questions. And then the final thing was just the Bush Street abatement. So I don't know if any of you have seen that. It's pretty significant. Open storage, overgrowth, junk vehicles, things like that. My inspector met with the potential abatement contractor. I think Carol has that information.
Yes, he has been using Jay Frye, the same gentleman that we used to go to the cemetery. He met with him today to see what it would take to abate this property here. And the bottom line is, he said, Mr. Frye said that he would have to get a bobcat and a dump truck, which he has a friend that they can work together and do that. He said that if he would like for us to pass up to three thousand dollars to get this property cleaned up. He doesn't think that it will be that much, but he don't want to come, you know, a few hundred dollars short and then, you know, be in a mess. But he, he said if we could pass for up to three hundred dollars and.
Three thousand dollars.
Yeah, three thousand, I'm sorry. And that it would be at least ten days, because there's ten days remaining on the, before the abatement. And it would be at least ten days for him to try to.
And you've gone through the process of reaching out to the property owner and letting him?
We have, yes. So the property owner, we, we held a hearing with the property owner who was present at that hearing. Conversations have, have been had. I'm going to double down tomorrow as well in addressing it and making sure that it is understood and known in hopes that this can be avoided so the town does not have to come out of pocket for abatement and then go through the legal procedures on the backside. But since the hearing, it's been pretty non-responsive by the property owner in reference to doing anything. And if we're gonna do it now, it's probably a better time than waiting until later in the summer just because of the amount of overgrowth going into it. I think the price would probably just go up. But yes, that's the plan. The, the property was posted and the final effect order to abate was done today, first on the property. So I'm planning. So I'm planning on hand-delivering one tomorrow, even though we've done everything else by mail and posting the property. And I plan to hand-deliver tomorrow and try to get it taken care of without it getting to that point. But, you know, in that case, since we don't meet again until another month, we wanted to go ahead and present this to you. I think my understanding was that he advised that it would not exceed 3,000, but said, you know, maybe up to that amount. It's considerable, the amount of stuff that is out there.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Frye up to $3,000?
I make a motion to allow Mr. Frye up to $3,000 to clean the property up.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ken, you're up. This is under old business, Withers Ravinale?
Hello, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I can come over here. This is Chris Rosenbaum, who, since I became the practicer lead of Withers upon Kevin East in the past, I rely on some of my higher-level staff to help me complete this. So this is Chris Rosenbaum, who's the director out of our Charlotte office, who kind of helped me finish this. So I don't want to steal his thunder since he did 99% of work.
Can you go ahead, though, and just give a little bit of history? We do have a new board member, so...
So the history is Bill Cameron with our office, who used to be the lead county manager, got in touch with, and understands a lot about the history here. And as Wolf Speed and the campsite and a lot of this started to evolve, what happens is when a big development like that comes into a town and says, do you have sewer capacity or do you have water capacity? The answer is, yep, take it, we love big business. Well, except then when that occurs, what happens is that the residents of the town have to then, under state regulations, expand the system to kind of put back the capacity that was given away. And so the mayor approached us and said, well, you know, understanding that, as all of this around moves forward, let's make sure that we're looking after the residents. Let's make sure that if they're coming in, that we have certain numbers to go to the legislator or to go to the outside and say, look, you know, this is great, but this is somewhat of the impact. And so we need, we needed to understand what that truly was going to be, as well as understanding when you're annexing gas stations and such along 64, what's the long-term plan for them to get sewage? Because what's going to happen is when industrial like that happens, the next thing that happens are larger grocery stores, more homes, infill. So getting, you know, trying to get all those zoning things in, you already ran out, because you're smart. Engineering presentations, everybody leaves for some reason, I don't know why. And so you have to start getting these things in because what you want to do is you want to fill the vacant spaces here in town where you don't have to expand. And so part of what, and a large portion, and I don't want to steal too much of this thunder, but what we looked at was, you know, expanding internally before you expand out to accommodate 64 and such, and what that really means.
So anytime we want to go to anybody, whether it be by grant or appropriation, to get something funding for the town, you pretty much have to have an engineering report.
And you have to have this preliminary report because you have to know what to ask for.
Exactly.
And they want to see that you, you looked at it, that you're having, you're thinking ahead.
All right, so I'm going to back up now again. This is Chris Rosenbaum, our director of our...
We've got a slideshow that kind of summarizes the report that we've, the draft report that we've supplied to the town. We've already kind of had our intros, so go on to the next slide here. Quick summation of presentation topics versus background, which we've pretty well been through. We're calling it a regional alternative analysis. We're looking at three different, three different possible growth alternatives that the town could be looking at in the future. The not as exciting opinion of probable costs, which do reflect some of the current construction costs that we're seeing right now. And kind of a brief discussion of the next steps. Quick background, need for sewer expansion. We see a bigger than a bite. We've got Ramsour in relation to the new campsite, as well as Southern City of Liberty. Summation of your existing wastewater system. Currently at 37 miles of pipeline, accommodation, gravity main, and force main. You have 10 pump stations and a wastewater treatment plant with a roughly 500,000 gallon per day capacity. And that is a permitted capacity with the discharge to the Deep River. Of course, another town is experiencing growth. Some of that's tied to industrial development, campsite, Wolf Speed, which we've already discussed. We know that's coming. And kind of a summation of additional sewer infrastructures needed to support the potential future demands that Ken was describing. Kind of a summation of the analysis that we did. Three growth alternatives were developed using Randolph County's growth management plan, Randolph County GIS database, as well as USGS watershed boundaries. So this is all, this is all very high-level analysis that we're talking about here. This is not to the parcel level, where this parcel is zoned a certain way. This is large, large chunks of land in and around Ramsour that we're estimating could be, you know, potential growth areas. And then last bullet, future expansion areas and associated infrastructure were estimated based on logical boundaries. Again, are these boundaries perfect? No, but there is a very high-level look. And it's utilized to estimate large additional volumes of wastewater that would then need to be transported and treated. Growth alternative one is described here. Again, there's three total. I apologize if the chart, I'm giving the wrong button here. I apologize, the chart up in this area, it's not easily legible, but hopefully the information to the left is. Total additional area for growth alternative one, we're showing is 14,000 acres. That has a total additional flow assigned to it of approximately five MPD. So in relation to your capacity now, which is a half MPD, that's quite a large jump.
Chris, is that bordering 49? Is that what that road is to the north?
I believe so, yeah, pretty sure. Yeah. Kind of a summation, again, this is, this is all high-level. We estimate where we think major new lines would have to go to collect and feed from these, from these growth areas, based on topography and where existing roadways are. So you end up with about 136,000 linear feet of new gravity main and about 9,500 feet of force main. So the difference there, if topography allows you to flow by gravity, that's free energy, right? So, but sometimes topography, if like in growth area three, you see there's a, the red dot at the very, their very corner is actually a pump station. That's, that's the topography where we need to pump uphill to get to a ridge and be able to gravity down. That's the difference between force main and the gravity main.
So when you look at these numbers, one, two, three, okay? Number one is very logical because you can just kind of extend some of the lines. It's all going to, it's all going to naturally flow down there. It's already like the river. So if somebody builds in, so if somebody wants to come in today, does anybody know where developers always want to build?
Next to it.
Wherever it's cheapest, right? Guess where the land is cheapest? In number three. Why? Because it takes a lot of money to get it there. And then they come to you and they say, give me the money for this, right? And you say, sorry, we can't afford it, and then so on and so forth. So what, when you look at these numbers, one, two, three, the purple is the most logical. So if somebody's coming into town and they're saying, we want to build, you say, great, number one's the area right now. And then kind of as you build that area out, then you can go to number two. And then as that kind of builds out, then you can go to area number three. But if somebody came in and said, I want to drop 3,000 homes in, in area number three, that's when you take a deep breath and go, I hope you got a big checkbook or this one of those big cardboard checks. So that's kind of how you have to think of these, in these numbers, one, two, three. It's kind of a municipal area, let's vote, not rural, open. And then three is kind of like way rural.
What is, what is the mileage to the eastern border of number three to Ramsour? Approximate?
I looked today on the computer and then I'm on it. It kind of borders out on 64 near Captain Tom's area.
So that, so that's not that far?
No.
Not at all?
No, we, you know, 136,000, sorry, 14,000 acres.
And we already know that because of Wolf Speed coming in, there's going to be substantial growth down 64 in that direction.
And this is a reason to tell them to come into town. It's cheaper.
It'll be less expensive.
The bank up there in the corner, bank up there on the corner, great place for a brewery for somebody, right? Nothing to run, nothing to do. Come on in. Soon as they want, soon as they... I think I said this before to the other council. Do you know why Dollar Generals are everywhere? I know, we're laughing there. Because it takes a water well and a small septic tank.
They don't need much.
They don't need anything. That's why, that's why there's no public bathroom there. That's all they need. So that's why you can see them randomly, you know, in what appears to be a farmer's field because they can put in a septic system and a small water well. And that was all they needed. And so, you know, this planning kind of avoids that. Sorry to steal your thunder. Okay, you're good.
The growth alternative two, to go back to one. Let's see, two, two's not that much different. It extends growth areas one and two further south. So what that does, the biggest change between one and two is now we're looking at, you know, the old location for the wastewater treatment plant no longer really makes sense. As if you continue to expand your growth area itself, having your wastewater treatment plant at the southern tip, in other words, further downstream along the river, starts to make more sense because you can flow by gravity. So the biggest change, we haven't got as much acreage, 15,000. We're only at 5.3 MPD total flow, which is five, we talked about before. Our pipeline length is not that much different. But the biggest change, as you'll see in coming slides, that's really cost per acre, is the relocation of wastewater treatment plant.
Question. The road between section two and three, how far out is that? Jason, do you know? Is that where the high school is? Can you tell? Well, and what I'm wondering is, is we already know that there's a lot of property for sale right in that area. And when we're going from section two to section three, when, when is the dividing line that says our sewer facility is no longer going to support? We have to go and get a new sewer facility if we're going to be using section three and if we're moving south. But if we're in section two, how long are we going to be able to continue to use our sewer facility if there's substantial growth in that area?
Are we talking about at its current capacity?
Yes.
Okay, so I think, I think no matter where the growth comes, it can come in one, two, or three. That's going to be, that's going to be more of a total capacity issue across all of these growth areas as opposed to within just two or three. That's going to kind of... So to give you an idea of the map, you see the orange line in section number two, that middle ways, can be down on the back porch down. That is the sewer force main coming from eastern around the hospital.
Okay.
So where that orange line ends in the middle of section number two, that's eastern around the hospital.
Okay, so it's farther east than, the boundary between two and three is farther east than the high school? Okay.
I want to ask a question on section one. I'm standing here where it says NC 49 North. How much of 49 is being picked up, if any, with this as we're going up? Because, you know, Eastern Randolph is not very far from 49.
This is Sandy Creek Golf Club, if that helps. Here, about the Brown's Crossroads.
So it's about the Brown's Crossroads, everybody, everybody's familiar with that?
So it's going all the way, it's going up that far?
And this is kind of a topic, I know in the county's plan, they, I think they have worked their plan too, at the possibility of sending sewers and delivery.
That's still up in the air? I mean, way, way up in the air? So I think when we have that meeting next month, hopefully we'll have more time to have that clarified.
Yeah, and you have this report because the issue is, as soon as Liberty sings, then you have to expand the plant.
So Liberty's, Liberty's looking at their options.
And that's a perfect example of you have a battery plant, and you know, you have something come in and you think you have capacity. Then suddenly, all the root cops that come with it, you don't really have capacity.
And just for knowledge, our permit right now is frozen. We can't increase our amounts that we're putting into Deep River, and that is by the state.
That's right.
We'll get into that, you're already jumping ahead.
Okay.
Almost like you read the report.
There we go. So growth alternative three, the biggest change now is we've extended way south. And this is just based on some additional, additional boundaries that, you know, could conceivably make sense in the future. We're talking about huge numbers, someone 12.6 MPD, there's a large plant. And we're talking about it being much further south along the Deep River.
And so option two is here.
Yep.
Option three is way down there.
Yep.
So what that means is all this additional property can come from the gravity. You know, is it likely? No.
No.
But is it something you at least have to understand? Like, when, again, when somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to put a, I want to put a really big, I got a good deal on, you know, 1,000 acres down here. You say, that's fantastic. We can't really help you right now.
With, with the growth that's coming out from the south from Moncur? And I'm not familiar with the surrounding area of Moncur, but I'm assuming that some of that's going to come north?
It's going to come, I mean, we have, we have been, there's developers that are buying 2,000 acres outside of Selma because it's close to Johnson County. So it's coming. And so again, the biggest thing is just to be, to at least have some understanding as to what's coming. Now, I know, you know, the movement company, they're working on your AIAs and they're helping you understand, they're helping you understand the micro of your system. And this is more what's going on around your system and how it would directly impact that.
And kind of a quick summary of three alternatives we've looked at. And it's been some pros and cons here, so, you know, some of the numbers we're looking at are big. I kind of broke it down, there's the report lists some raw numbers. This is more broke down per acre of growth. Alternative one being most cost-effective at 14,000 an acre. That does include the smallest growth area, however, and it best encourages infill within the existing service area first. Before I go into alternative two and three, I want to highlight the sentence at the bottom, which is, is what the mayor alluded to. All alternatives that we're looking at are contingent upon the state providing future guidance on APD... providing future guidance on, uh, APDS, which is discharge permitting. And that's, that's not just the deep river, it's the entire Cape Fear Basin. So it's, it's a large chunk of the state that's under, that's frozen right now. And it's dealing with the same thing that you, that you're dealing with, uh, until the state finishes their study. And they're looking at total nutrient loadings. Um, you know, effluent is clean, is, is treated wastewater. However, there's, you know, some level of nitrogen that's still allowed. There's some love, level of phosphorus is still allowed in that effluent for it to be deemed clean and, and meet, meet permit. They're looking at, you know, nutrient loadings through the entire Cape Fear Basin. And, yeah, that, those, those, that guidance is supposed to be out, what, over a year ago? And they're still working on it. Um, so that's kind of a, a state level issue. It's not a, not a town level issue right now.
So the state has figured out how to stop cows from pooping in the rivers? And until they do, they're going to hold the people with permits responsible?
And I think when Senator Galien, Representative Jackson were here, we did mention that to them, that we're kind of being hamstrung by the permitting, where we can't increase our permits, even though there's a good, we probably would be okay. We're still being hamstrung at this point.
Yeah. And there's a lot of, uh, a lot of assumptions of what people think's going to come out of that study eventually, even though that they wish it would have already come out. Maybe it's higher treatment limits, which means better treatment plants, more water, lower nutrient levels equals the same nutrient loading as before, right? Um, that's what most people think's going to come, but, uh, you know, the treatment plant projects right now are incredibly high in cost. I mean, you know, pipes and pumps are one thing, but treatment plant expansions are, are, are quite another.
Are they prohibited?
Excuse me?
Is it prohibited? In other words, cost exponentially has gone up the last few years.
It has.
And now, they're going to start printing money again.
But it's going to continue to go up.
Yeah?
Excuse me?
It's going to continue to go up, cost is going to continue to explode.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, not to, if you speculate the, the amount of infrastructure money that, that's currently supposedly coming out of this $3 billion surplus from the state, if they, if they suddenly put that into infrastructure.
And I think they're.
And I think that that's kind of what they're doing.
In accordance to the meeting we went to in Raleigh, they are, they're, they're putting it all in.
And that's kind of the appropriation, right? So that's, that's one of those things that if you're going to do it, you know, last time they put this money in was the seventies. And that's why all, that's why all the sewers were, they're going for pennies on the dollar.
And I mean, and which is, which is, you know, obviously, if, if a structure is a, a, a great investment, there's no doubt about it. But the problem is we don't have enough contractors to do that work. And, and everybody's just as busy as they could ever want to be. Why would they come in with a low price? Just, um, yeah.
Same thing for engineers. 10 years ago, Walton and us would have been fighting over, over this work. Now we're like, nope, you do this, you do this, let's just try and get it all done because there's so much work.
And you work so well together.
We do work well.
Yeah. We're just trying to butter you up for the next slide.
We've already seen all the comments.
When the report came out, it didn't surprise me with cost.
So, but you can see, you can see as we jump from alternative one to alternative two, the, the increase in cost per acre. That's because now you're looking at relocating a treatment plant instead of expanding it in the same location.
When you're saying the cost per acre, that's how much somebody would be willing to pay per acre?
No.
No, it's just, that's just breaking it into, I was trying to look at a way to say, okay, we had this many acres. We had this, this giant number of costs. Let's look at it as a dollar per acre to better compare the, the cost benefit of the different alternatives.
It's not exactly a one-to-one looking at it, but it's kind of like, if you had a developer coming in, looking at something that was $10,000 an acre to purchase. And they came in and said, we're, we have this great deal, we're getting $10,000 an acre. You turn and go, well, that $10,000 is technically probably closer to 24 by the time you get that infrastructure built. And that doesn't include roads and everything within, internal to that. But that's what makes this so valuable, because it can gear that growth discussion of please don't build where, where it's $21,000 an acre. Because that's, again, that's your future residents that are going to have to bear that cost.
And now we're looking at, looking at big numbers. Um, these costs are reflective only of the major conveyance systems. So we're not talking about the little eight-inch lines that are, that are coming off, you know, individual neighborhoods that could possibly, uh, be, be in these areas, uh, individual businesses, et cetera. These are, these are major, major collectors, or trunk lines, as we like to call them. Of course, uh, we see, we see the total for alternative one at 200. We see the 200 million. We see the total for alternative two estimated at 350. And alternative three at 760. So, uh, very large numbers. Um, a lot of that is, is tied into what becomes a very large wastewater treatment plant.
So the 145 in the very first phase, again, that's that piece that kind of splits real long. That's because that's where the treatment plant expansion number is. So that's obvious, because you can build anything you want, but if you don't have a place to take it, it doesn't matter.
That's right. We, we put, we put the treatment plant numbers in service area one in each case. That's why it's so, so large.
Mayor, do you want to remind everyone the money that was put towards the water line? The money that's being put at the water line?
The 55 million?
Drop of the hat, right?
It's, it's gone already.
And it's, yeah, I mean, and, and it's gone, and that's just the water line. So when you're looking at these things and, and they're talking about money to, to support these industries, if somebody wanted to come in, here's your number. If economic development came in tomorrow and said, hey, we have this mega site, another one, because, you know, we're starting to get all these, what's it going to take? Now you have your numbers, you can have the discussion.
And, and that's, that's really the key takeaway here is not all of this, and, you know, that, that's going to be part of the, you know, the maybe possible next steps is, you know, how, how is this, how would this, could this be paid for? Well, some of that's not known because we don't know, you know, the next mega site, four years ago, did we, didn't we know about Wolf Speed, right? We didn't. But that, that, those are some of the answers. You know, if, if the state wants to attract some of these, some of these large, uh, large industrial giants, if you will, they're, they're looking to, to assist. Uh, some of that's also borne by developers. If developers need to get from A to B, they got to help A to B from A to B. But I think having the plan in place and, and a plan that, uh, that seems feasible for the long term, and this is very long term, is, is, is the key. Uh, so what would next steps be? Uh, this is a very, again, a very high level look. Uh, you start drilling down a little bit, refined master planning, uh, considering more like the, the parcel zoning land use, which is a little more what, uh, what Walton's doing right now on the waterside. A funding analysis at a regional level, uh, that involves state monies and involves, uh, you know, possible, you know, developer contributions, et cetera. A planning level hydraulic model is, is very important when you start, you start looking at these and you start sizing pipes. We're sizing, we're making estimates based on flow per acre and, and, and trying, trying to estimate it, saying, you know, that's approximately a 36 inch. Well, and you start doing modeling, you start getting into some more, some more tight numbers of what, what the pipes are actually going to be. And then, uh, of course, you know, way down the road, you're looking at final design and construction as, as individual pieces of, of this expansion start to become more real and, and needed.
So are we looking at over the next couple of years, the next five years, the next 10, 20 years?
I mean.
In a normal timeline world.
We're not normal right now.
I know, that's the, that's the.
So I say normally, you're looking at 10, 20 years. You're looking at way down the road. But again, s- something like Wolf Speed happens and it becomes, it becomes, you know, five years. That's, that's the, that, that's what's hard to, 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 to gauge.
And if you, if you pulled a big check of the 250 million out of that year ago, we're still not turning on a tap, um, just on the sewer side for at least five to six years. And that's assuming the state would.
And assistance funding.
Right, yeah, and, and, and that's what I mean. So if, if the, if the money tree, you know, if you open up your own press in the basement and started. Uh, but if you could go back to one of the maps, there's one of the, I want to touch on this zoning. So one of the things about the zoning, the reason it's important to consider is because, again, focusing on, just on, on area three, if somebody does come in and say, I want this, you can say, that's fine, we'll provide you with water because that we can do a little cheaper, a little easier. But you must have onsite septic tanks. We can't, so if you're going to zone it, you, you zone it such that it is owned for, for septic and, and not primary collection. That is just an example as to kind of how you can do that. You, so you make the density such that it would require a septic system. So they must be one or two acre lots so that they can accommodate on-site septic, septic systems versus suddenly having a density out there that, that allows for homes, you know, townhomes or something along those lines that are much, so that's why you want to focus, you want to focus that density in your zoning around, around those areas where, where, where it can accommodate in the infill, if somebody wanted to put, you know, houses literally right here. Take, take the empty lots. And that's, that's how you want to encourage that through comprehensive planning. Most comprehensive plans, they look at roads, they look at services, fire departments, schools, et cetera. But they ignore sewers because they're boring. But the sewer, that's where the real money is. Think of the schools you could build if they didn't, if you didn't have to spend $35 million on, on sewer getting in there. Sorry.
And of course, we've, we've been asking questions. That's, that's just a, a very high level summary. Again, this is, this is a high level look at, at possibilities, if and when, if and when, you know, this, the state's ready to, to, to pony up and then help with a, with a treatment plant expansion. Once the state also starts allowing such things, then ha- having a, having a better plan in place on, on, on other benefits that the town can receive outside of just somebody like Wolf Speed having treatment plant capacity. That's great, but how else can the town expand, uh, using such a, a, a growth tool?
And when you're saying town, um, just to be clear, that doesn't mean we've annexed them in. That just means the services we're providing.
Service area, that's right. But there.
Anactation is always your choice. As it is, again, do you want to make that, you know, do you want, if they're going to give you that sewer, you can still serve them sewer without having to extend it.
I know you all, this is a lot of information, a lot, a lot of information. And, and we do have that meeting coming up again next month. So my suggestion is, is that you chew on this for a while, study it, go to our next meeting, and then let's bring it up for conversation and talk about it again. Um, we've got budget process going through. We know we don't have that much money in our checking account anyways. So, does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
After a future question, I would just ask that you follow through the mayor.
Thank you, guys. Do you want to take a break while we let them break down? Would that be good, just go through? I know. All right, um, old business number six, cleaning town offices.
We, uh, we got two people that had beds and we went with the last one, which was a high school student. And we were in the process of finalizing that. And we did find out that she, so far we found out she didn't have, to have a work permit. Uh, and that's what we're waiting on, is to get that information back from the. It's the federal, federal people. So that we can, you know, see when she can start work.
Anything else on that?
Uh, no.
Uh, budget meetings?
Situational awareness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Um, I've set up the situational awareness training, um, for April 28th at 1 P M. And, um, also, uh, I wanted to discuss the closing the town hall during that timeframe. Um, I figure it's probably going to be a window of two to three hours. I would say three hours max. Um, and the public, they're welcome to come as well.
So you're, you want to make a motion to close town hall from one to four?
Yes, please. I want, I would like to make a motion to close town hall on April 28th from one to four.
There was a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
This is for, uh, excuse me, for that training.
Well, yes, it's to.
And that way, if the office staff want to come, will they be?
Correct, yeah, I wanted the office staff, everyone, um, first responders, uh, anyone that can come. I believe it would be beneficial to do so. It's just to try and to be proactive instead of reactive and paying attention to potential situations that could arise that could turn violent or deadly.
I think we voted, Carol, did you get all that? Now, my budget meetings?
We weren't able to have the budget meeting, but we need to go ahead and set our first date and go ahead and vote on it.
So we want to go ahead and just do the first Tuesday?
We can't, we have a conflict on, we have one of our department heads that's in service training and can't do Tuesday. So they can do Monday night, the third, but they can't do Tuesday. And it's very important our department heads to be here.
Well, can we just do the one and then possibly, does, does any of the other dates going forward? Conflict, is there conflict with the?
Not the, not the second Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, I've seen the reason why not. So you're saying in April, the first Monday?
April the third, which is first Monday, and then you can go back to the second Tuesday for May and June.
Bob, is there a conflict with you on that?
Is there a first Monday in April?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is April the third, and then it'll be May the, May the ninth. And then June, June the 13th. Does that 13th give us time to do the?
And then you'll have to have a special hearing in June also?
Is that going to give us time?
Or the public hearing?
It's going to put it in June.
Do you think we could get it done at the regular meeting?
The regular meeting's the 20th.
We can determine at the budget meeting in the beginning of the month if we need to go ahead and, and have the public hearing at the end of the month?
I'll make a motion, we have the budget meeting Monday, April the third, Tuesday, June the 13th, and Tuesday, um, I mean, May the, Tuesday, May the 9th, and Tuesday, June 13th.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Speed bump?
Um, Oliver Street has called, I've had a couple call on Oliver Street. They're using that as a cut through now, which we had figured that was going to happen. I have worked on the power bill, putting a little bit more money in it for next year for some more speed bumps. But I did advise them that we'd have to have the petition and they have not brought any petitions for. So it's, it's a required 70% of the residents to sign a petition to have that. I did advise them that we would be moving these around. We wouldn't be buying them for every street, but we would move them around periodically. And we do have the speed sign that we're moving around throughout town already. So, um, I do know the speed sign's been working. I've had several people to say when they see it, they stop. Something else that, I went through another town the other day and they had painted gala across their street and put speed bump signs in it. And I actually stopped and every car behind me was stopping because we thought they were speed bumps. So that's might be another option too, just till they learn there's no speed bumps. But, but, but it was, it, it worked, it worked because it visually thought there was a speed bump there. But, um, but we're going to work on this. Police is working, patrolling and all that too. We're still getting complaints about speeding throughout town, but.
It's not just in town, it's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
Uh, Randolph County Growth Management, um, as I indicated in the email, and I did bring the agenda, and as you can see, there's not much on here. the agenda, and as you can see, there's not much on here. So with their agenda, what they have is, and this is a draft of the agenda, at five thirty, welcoming and check in. At five forty, five forty-five, they are going to do a Randolph County Growth Management Plan Overview. And as you can see how this is tying in exactly with what the guys from Weather's Rev and All were talking about. And they're going to have Piedmont Triad Regional Council is going to have a compress, a comprehensive plan video. At six o'clock, they're going to be doing an explanation of stations. The stations are going to include the map station, the policy station, and the general input survey station. At six forty-five, they're going to start all over again. So. Did you guys hear what Bob said? So we can attend this meeting, why don't we have a short meeting on April third before or after the budget meeting?
Can we start at six?
I think that's when we said the budget meeting's ending, six.
It's close.
That'll work for everybody? I want to entertain a motion on it.
I'll make that motion.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor? So that'll give you some free time if you want to go do the first or the second, or if you want to hit both of them. New business presentation?
Most of you know, he's been with the fire department for thirty-two years. He's gave thirty-two years to the town of Ramser. He's always looking after his guys and not thinking about himself when it comes to raises and everything. So the town wants to present you with this axe here for your thirty-two years of service and how much we appreciate you and your service to the town of Ramser.
That's awesome.
Don't mess it up.
Ian kill me later, Jay.
That's amazing, very good. Next, under new business is the agenda, cutoff time, copies, et cetera.
I feel like we need to do like most towns and have a cutoff time for the agenda, and anything after that can be amended on that Monday. So our packets can get to us maybe by Thursday evening, and Carol's not having to work on change everything over the weekend. I also think we, in my opinion, this is just a lot of wasted paper. I feel like we could get the email packets to us, and if we choose to print, then we could print, or come down here and print or whatever, but I just feel like we need to streamline it a little bit to give her time to have these packets ready. And like I said, we can always amend the agenda on that night if we needed to add something.
Can we do that if somebody wants a printed copy, they could just let her know?
They can, but you can easily come down here and hit print on your computer and save her time after she emails it. I'm just, a lot of people don't realize that office has a lot more reporting and a lot more stuff going on than in in these classes and talking to the league and talking to P T R C. There's not enough help in that office. And I know you, a lot of people go, well, they're more than they've ever been, but these, the reporting's getting worse, the state's getting picky, and I just feel like we need to streamline it on their behalf so she's not sitting here on Saturday and Sunday doing all this. And if we need it printed, we can easily print it at home or here at the office or.
J C. Greg Patton and Ramon found some tablets that cost less than ninety bucks, and they can download it on.
To the tablets, yeah. There's other towns that are looking at tablets to put them up to keep this.
Ninety bucks, two some Amazon, and they download it on there so they.
It's right here in front of you. You need to just go by that.
Maybe you can look at that in the budget.
I mean, it's whatever, y'all, I just feel like we need to help them out.
There is the the printer, the commissioner room does have a printer in it, correct? So you can. If everybody's good with that, I think it's a fine idea.
I make a motion, we go ahead and do a five, five P M Wednesday before the meeting, cutoff on the agenda, and then any changes after that, we amend it and and go to the email process, and if we want to print it, we can print it ourselves.
Now, you're saying five P M Wednesday changes to the agenda, which means you have to have stuff in prior to that?
You have to have everything you want on agenda in by Wednesday at five P M so she can get the packets together and get them out to us instead of working all weekend to get them ready. That's what most towns do it the week before and.
I was going to say Monday, so that way she has a couple of days to to review what's been submitted and if there's any questions.
Monday's fine with me too, if that's fine with y'all.
You're talking about the Monday, the week before, the week before the meeting?
Yeah.
It's the week before the meeting on that Monday.
Most time I know, there's only a few things that come up between then and.
And once in a while, some things do come up.
I'll say Monday at five.
So the motion is Monday at five P M, the week before the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Very good. P T R C pay study?
Also, taking these classes, and I know Joyce took some, and Diane took some of these classes, we really have not had a pay study in this town in probably twenty years, maybe. And I know the P T R C does them, and I know the league does them, but I I think we need to look at a pay study for this town just to see. One thing we're learning in these classes, and I think Carol went to a P T R C meeting recently, and and they've even said the the private sector is outgrowing the government sector, and we're not competitive anymore, and we can't get the help we need. If you look around the the area law enforcement agencies, I know Ashford's down seventeen, the county's down a bunch, Raneman's down, Liberty, I think they're okay right now. Rent, we're okay right now.
Do you want to go ahead and and see what the pay study would cost?
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to reach out to them and see what a pay study would cost.
And we could put that in our agenda, on our budget. Street closure for twenty twenty-three festivals?
April the twenty-ninth, the Food Truck Festival, August the twelfth is the Back to School for Jordan Memorial, October the twenty-first is the Thirty-Fifth Annual Day on Main Street, which will require, if possible, a longer street of closure than last year. The chamber is working on some special activities to include a concert that night and fireworks after that for the thirty-five years. So that will require a little bit longer closure, probably till at least ten P M Saturday night, and then December the second's the Christmas Festival. And I make a motion, we go ahead and approve all these closures.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Water and Sewer Public Works?
I think the replacement registers are first there, and J C, you know more about this than I do, Diane gave it to me, there are twelve registers that are not working, and so we're going to have to replace them. And so they they thought that since they're ordering twelve anyway, they would go ahead and get fifteen, so they would have just a few extra if some of the other ones wore out. Some of them, whenever they, Diane first mentioned it to me, might be under warranty, they have found out now that ten of them, I believe, are under warranty, and they can get them for a hundred and twenty-five dollars each. Five of them would not be under warranty, so they would be at a hundred and seventy-five dollars each for a total cost of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We're losing money on these registers that are not reading, we have to go back and read again, and as I, as I understand, if one meter goes out, it's to the person's favor and not to the town's favor. So we're losing money there too, because we're not able to track what water's actually used.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we go ahead and approve fifteen.
For the approximate cost of?
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
Is there a second?
My second.
Any further discussion? Is there going to be a warranty on these for how long?
No, will there be a warranty on these, J C? J C, J C?
No, not once you replace them under warranty. I know, you know, a couple years they were replaced over a thousand registers, they were under warranty. But they go back, they're under warranty. Now, I'm assuming that's what the five is.
Is that, several years ago, we placed the batteries in them, right?
Yeah, that's what's happening, they're they're getting moisture in the, in the pit.
So it's the batteries that we're replacing?
Yeah, it's not the meter itself, it's the register, so it's a cost of meter.
Okay, so but the five of them, they will be under warranty, the new ones?
I think she said five would, ten would be, but no, I don't think the five new will be either.
Ten, we can get a hundred and twenty-five each, five, we can get a hundred and seventy-five each for a total of two thousand one twenty-five.
Is that including, we're installing, right? So is there any shipping or handling or tax?
There may be.
So you want, you want to amend your motion?
I made a motion to approve up to twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five?
Except for taxes and shipping.
Is there a second on the amended motion?
A second.
Teresa? Any further discussion? All in favor? Copy or lease?
The water plant, J C is having them go to Staples to make bigger copies because of the small copier they have, and we've reached out the copier plus. And I know our current leases are on five years, and to get this, he, we reached out at the perfect time because he said these don't come available often at the, this is about a six-month-old copier that they got back from a company that went out of business. And this will provide him able to make bigger copies, and you can explain what you.
Yeah, so this is a part of the, all the blueprints we have here for, you know, if anything's down, I can actually make copies of all those maps. And this one actually, I may as well scan them into a computer, put them in a computer box. Pretty much right now, you know, if something happened in town hall, call fire, whatever, all of the maps in that room would be, we wouldn't have any maps. So that's kind of, kind of my thing behind it is, I can, I can scan them all in, get it put on the computer, and then I can have them on the computer back. All of them backed up, and then if, like today, for instance, John Gray did, he needed a copy of a map, and instead of me having to deal with a current copy, give him, he came by and picked it up, and he took it with him and made a copy, and he can bring it back, bring our product back in price. But it allows for stuff like that, and I can make copies for people that need them, give them out, and we can keep the main copies here without having to leave, leave town hall.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
How much was the lease on?
Thirty-six months, it's one eighty-six, sixty-three, and then, like I said, all the other ones, we went sixty months on, it's one twenty-eight oh eight. I make a motion, we do the sixty months like we have, because he's, a copier, top of the Rob, a copier lasts about five years when you use it. And most agencies have to replace them every five years, so at the end of that lease, it would just be decided if we go with another one or one.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Wooten Progress Meeting Update? Give me the notes. Are you up?
All right, so last Wednesday, we had our monthly meeting with John Gray with Wooten to get an update on the A I grants and the water replace, or water replacement grant. The A I's for the, the water A I is about seventy, sixty percent complete, what they're doing, they're, with us having to do the locating for all the drilling companies, they're actually coming behind us in G P S and all of our paint lines, including the fire hydrants valves. So they're, they're doing pretty good on that part. He, he told me today that they're already putting that in the G I S system, and I think they're going to get me set up on that next week or so, and then I can start accessing the G I S system for all these water lines and everything they've done, G P S. The sewer, they're about eighty percent complete with it. They sent an email today, I think, and letters should be going out, we're going to start smoke testing the sewer lines on the third of April. Yeah, so as of the fire department, y'all might be getting a lot of calls for smoke coming out of the ground. But the town hall did get letters, and they, they were putting envelopes to send out today. So, so that's kind of where we stand on that one right now. And the water system improvement, the initial draft is complete, they're going to send it to the state, the state will review it, and then, you know, it'll be a long process when the state reviews it, and they'll have to send back again for any changes the state wants to see. The only thing with the the water system improvement grant, they did, we finally did get approval for them to pay as as we go instead of having to pay all upfront. So when Wooten invoices us, we'll, we'll get that grant money upfront to pay, pay Wooten as they invoices for that project. That's pretty much caught up where they're at with that. The rate study, they, they still need some information for that to do all that, but they A grants are ahead on the timeline on them, the timeline on the water system improvements is still looking at the water plant, all that will be done by the end of two thousand twenty-four, and the water lines will be the end of two thousand twenty-five. But I think that's, that's about where all that stands.
And that's the maintenance to our existing water lines?
Yes, the replacement of the existing water.
Does anybody have any questions?
And then another thing that J C added earlier, the biodynamics, we are cleaning basins this weekend at the water plant. I'm hoping that it won't be as costly this time, it shouldn't be as hard to remove. You just never know until they start doing it, but we will be doing that on Saturday.
Do you want to let the board know about your meeting that you had with last week when they came out and revisited your plant? I don't remember his name, Deener came out, revisited?
Oh, oh, with, yeah, so last week, Mia Arnold and Greg met with Ron Boone, he is over, he's with the state over collection systems, that's the sewer stuff. It was a follow-up from a previous inspection. Seemed like things went well, we haven't got the letter for how that's going to go yet. Hopefully, hopefully it's moved things over, so we'll, I'll let y'all know whenever we hear back from that. I imagine he should be sending something soon.
Great.
That's, I think that's everything.
Thank you. Brooklyn Water Project?
I wanted to revisit the Brooklyn Water Project that previous commissioner brought up, Tim Matthews brought up back in January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, because there is an additional ten dollars being imposed or imposed on some of the water bill customers. And doing some deeper digging and research, all these customers are out of Ramser city limits and trying to understand why they were being charged the extra ten dollars for a responsibility that we have to take care of infrastructure, when things are going on with the water lines and that nature. I really would like to have this ten dollars removed from the customers because it is unfair to charge these people that are outside of the city limits, the extra ten dollars, when we are responsible for taking care of the water lines when there's an issue. In looking into this, one of the concerns that I have, this started, the forty-two people, and there's been probably pluses and minuses to that, but right now, as of today, there's forty-two people on the road that are being charged this extra ten dollars. This started back. Um, this started back June first, I mean, January first of twenty fourteen. So they've been paying ten dollars extra, um, for nine years. Now, um, the previous councilmen's, um, decided this, but the concern was nobody was made aware, these people were not made aware that this was going to hap, that they were gonna have to pick up an extra ten dollars to cover the cost, um, that the grant didn't pay for. So, um, I got a letter from one of the, um, uh, water payers, if you will, and all it basically says is, you know, the town, um, was writing them to update them that a pending, uh, project to replace the water main that the, uh, services at that particular address. Um, and after many months of waiting, uh, the town was letting them know that they were pleased to, um, inform that the town of Ramso has secured the necessary funding and is proceeding with the project. So with that being said, why are we asking people to pay additional ten dollars if we have secured the necessary funding for that? You know, um, I haven't had to pay the extra ten dollars, uh, my understanding, these people are out of the city limits. Okay, yeah, we, I, I paid double taxes, so do they, so I am asking this board to please, um, take that off or have that pulled, um, because I, I don't understand why that is necessary.
Um, I think, and Carol was part of the history of this, because she's part of those people that pays that extra ten dollars. But, and Carol, correct me if I say something that isn't accurate, the ten dollars was to offset the cost from the loan that the town had to take out. Um, and Bobby, you can, you, I think you were probably here, that there's just a couple of years left on that loan payment? Um, did you have, do you have the amortization schedule?
We've been paying since, when was it only?
Two thousand fourteen.
Yep, twenty fourteen.
Mm-hmm, and then there was a, there was a schedule that was to be paid. I don't know how much is left, um, on that, and I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree with it. What I'm saying is in order for the board to make sure they're making a proper decision, I think they should know exactly how much is left.
Did that letter not tell them they were gonna be charged ten dollars?
No, the letter basically says, is, I am pleased to inform you that the town of Ramso has secured the necessary funding. So if you, if the town of Ramso has had secured the necessary funding, that means they were gonna handle it, they were gonna take care of it. So why are we doubling back on, uh, these people and asking them to pay ten additional dollars? When you say you, you know, you had the funding, if that was the case, the letter should have been sent to them.
Indicating?
Indicating we are short, or whatever it is that you need to say. Um, we are gonna tack on additional ten dollars to your bill to make them aware, because they wasn't aware. You had, my understanding, several people coming in saying, why, what, why am I paying an extra ten dollars? I understand we only have a couple more years, or they only have a couple more years to pay on it, but they were, that, that was not, um, they were not told, uh, correctly, um, about this in the beginning and I, I, I just believe in being fair to the people in, in the town, whether they're in the city limits or not.
And that's something that we're talking to the LGC and talking to PTRC and talking to the league. They said you've got to treat everyone in your town fairly, that's your service area, fairly as you would everybody else. We have to be fair about this stuff, and it's not been fair in the past, and I think we've emphasized about being fair a lot on this floor.
My concern is, and I know it's not a whole lot of money that's slept in our budget year, but part of our budget included that ten dollars. And so my only.
I don't know if it did or not, we were never, we never did go over the water and sewer budget last year, we got no
I think.
knowledge of that, and I'm, we are, you're talking.
We did supply for the loan, it's in the budget for the loan.
Yeah.
For that payment to be paid each year.
Mm-hmm.
So that's already in there.
Can you, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just, uh.
Does the town charge inside and outside rates?
Yes.
And outside pays a higher rate.
Plus they're paying a, a ten dollar additional of the higher rate.
I don't mean to be crooked for my own pawn, I complained about it from the very beginning and asked the mayor at that time, uh, okay, so you're going to put this fee onto us, how many years are we gonna have to pay that? Well, they evaded that question altogether.
They evaded it for several years, yeah.
It's never told nothing, never told, well, I had found out at that point, whenever I was asking, that it was going to be ten dollars a month. But I, I said, okay, I said, when will this end? How many years? But well, 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 and I said, so in other words, once you get this ten dollars put on my bill, you have no intention of ever taking it off. Well, 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 well. So.
That's, that's my.
You're only talking eight hundred and forty dollars the rest of this May and June, because April bills have went out.
And that's my argument.
The bill went out.
There's no trans, there was no transparency to the people that were.
At that time.
At that time, that were asked, and we just don't treat, we don't, we should not be treating people that way. And they're paying a higher rate outside the city limits versus inside, that's tough.
Plus ten dollars.
Yeah, plus ten dollars.
Correct. What do y'all want to do?
Take the ten off of their bill.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to take ten off the bill. My second.
So you got first and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
This began, the next bill is up that I'll be for.
Yeah, Carol will let Diane know.
Let Diane know, the next bill is up.
Uh, police and fire?
Um, we still got to get the old police station cleaned out, and this is gonna require some of them coming in on time off. Um, I'd like to pay them overtime to come in and get that done, because they're already having to fill up a position that we're short on right now due to other issues. Um, Teresa, I took her up the other day, and I know Diane's been up, and I know Joy's been up, most of you've been up, it, it's got to be cleaned out before any work on, and the building's deteriorating the bare bad. So we've got to start working on that building, or we're gonna have issues, um, upstairs, downstairs, the whole, the whole building, so.
I don't think you need board approval to do that, man.
Well, it's, it, I just would like to get approval to pay overtime for them to come in on their days off, and then we're gonna take the trash that needs to be taken to the dumpster at the park. So if we can get them a key to that lock, so they can do that, so I'd just like to get approval. I know we, we've got money in the salaries for that, I know.
Make your motion.
I make a motion, we go ahead and prove the overtime.
My second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unmuffled engine?
The unmuffled engine signs went up, but we've got a glitch in that ordinance. The ordinance cannot be found, the previous administration passed it and never put the ordinance in the book. So it cannot be charged until we have the ordinance and a fine.
Do you have the minutes from that meeting?
I don't know what meeting it was.
The minutes I included here is from this board's regular meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And where Commissioner Parrish stated that the previous board had approved the unmuffled engine rated ordinance. So that was November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I can't find the actual paper. I don't know if the ordinance, if it was on the computer, if it got lost with the November twenty twenty crash, when the computer went down. I have no way of knowing, I, I can't find the actual ordinance anywhere. This is all I could find, where JC was, they were talking about, you were talk, you were talking about the signs at the time. And he made mention that the previous board had already approved that ordinance. If anybody at the previous board has a copy of it, I would be glad to scan it in.
Jack break.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they called it the unmuffled engine break.
Yeah, it was called Jack, Jack.
Yeah, that's what it announced.
Before the, before, we, we really need, I guess, we'll have to do this during budget, but some of our, uh, city ordinances that are charged on the city ordinance ticket were, we have not set fees for, so the police can't write them until we set some fees. So Erin, if you can get me those, list of those city ordinances we need fees for, so we can work on that on budget. Okay, so we need to be looking at that, because I think the, the ordinance was passed, but I never remember seeing a fee scheduled passed on these ordinances.
So Bob's gonna look at, see if he can find this, and then, do you want to go ahead and put it on next month's meeting, so we can clarify? Annual Fire Department?
All right, this is the annual report for twenty twenty-two. I'll try to be brief, I know y'all have had a long night, mayor, commissioners, citizens. Um, this is the annual report for twenty twenty-two, I want to express my appreciation to the mayor and the board commissioners for their support. Also, I want to thank Carl Kakers and her staff, Chief Presley, his officers for assisting us on several calls this year. Uh, on the third page there, uh, is a, a list of calls that we've run in, in twenty twenty-two, broken down by the, the number of each call type and, uh, the percentage that they were. Uh, you'll notice on there, the majority of our calls are medical, uh, that sixty-four percent, uh, last year were. And that's just Randolph County there, you know, all the fire departments in Randolph County runs EMS, that's what the majority of your calls are gonna be. And that's, that's pretty much standard, uh, what people's office, you know, two hundred and eighty-seven, I'm more medical. Calls by day of week, uh, this varies every year. Monday, and this past year was the most popular day of the week for calls. Uh, a lot of times on the weekends, Saturday was the second. Calls by time of day. Uh, from about, uh, one PM to three PM was the most popular times. Uh, this is part of the reason that we have our staff working during that time, our place staff. So in twenty twenty-two, there's, the department responded to four hundred and forty-six calls, this is an increase of thirty-eight percent over twenty twenty-one. That, too, is a trend that we've seen countywide with all the fire departments. Uh, no particular call type, uh, is standing out to any of us more than any of the others, it's just more call volume on everybody. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we, we did have a thirty-one percent increase in confirmed overdose calls. Uh, that's not suspected overdose calls, those are just the confirmed ones, uh. Uh, on the upside, the COVID calls went down about forty-five percent, although we're still seeing those as well. Uh, including the call total, were, uh, eight mutual aid calls and three automatic aid calls, those are calls where we're assisting other departments around us. Um, Ramso had an average of five point five firefighters responding to calls. Training, uh, as you can see by the call breakdown of call type, firefighters must be trained in a variety of disciplines. Uh, firefighters train each week, at least each week, on a variety of subject matters, and, uh, those are all listed out there for you. Um, the state of North Carolina requires thirty-six trin, training hours for a firefighter each year. In twenty twenty-two, Ramso firefighters saw two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one training hours, which averaged to a hundred and forty-six point four training hours, about four times the, the amount per firefighter required by the state. Uh, our career firefighters currently have two career guys, uh, they work, uh, from seven thirty to four, uh, on Monday through Friday. Mainly because that's the, the time that we have the least amount of volunteers in the town. The career guys are responsible for daily, weekly, and annual, uh, and monthly apparatus checks and equipment checks, uh, maintenance on the building. They also pressure test approximately five thousand seven hundred feet of fire hoses annually, conduct pre-incident surveys on all commercial properties annually, there's currently a hundred and fifty-eight of those, and test each fire hydrant twice annually, currently there's a hundred and ninety-nine of those. The career firefighters also conduct, uh, fire extinguisher training for various area businesses, as well as safe, fire safety education for schools. Most importantly, they're here to respond, uh, when most of the volunteers are out of town. In twenty twenty-two, they responded to a hundred and fifty calls, which was thirty-three point six percent of the total. Another reason their, their work is, the things that they're doing is important. ISO classification, the insurance, uh, services office classifies, uh, or ratings each, each fire department every year. This is how the, the homeowners', uh, insurance, the commercial insurance writes, this is what it's all based on. Uh, a class one is the best that you can get, a class ten is unprotected, that's how the range goes. Uh, in North Carolina, every five years, every department has to be inspected. During our last inspection, which was December of twenty twenty, uh, we received a class three rating. Uh, there are fifteen hundred and twenty fire departments in North Carolina. And class three is better than eighty-eight point two percent of those departments. And better than eighty-six point two percent of the, the departments in the nation. Uh, so they're doing a good job. Uh, additional notes of interest, the fire department participates in the statewide, uh, smoke alarm canvassing each year, known as Smoke Alarm Saturday. We target a specific area of town each, each year when we do this, takes place, uh, in the summertime. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, the fire, firefighters installed forty-two smoke alarms at no cost to the homeowners. And citizens of the town can contact us anytime they want to, we'll come out, check our alarms, put new alarms up for them, whatever, zero cost. Uh, we also are constantly seeking grant funding, and we received fifty-five thousand dollars in grant funding in twenty twenty-two. Recommendations? The part everybody hates. Uh, our biggest recommendation, uh, is for apparatus, we've got to start planning for apparatus replacement. First out, engine, engine forty-one is thirty years old, thirty years, nobody's driving a thirty-year-old car in Ramso. Yeah, they're not, and it's not a matter of life and death, whether it's cranking or not either. Yeah, we have got to do some replacement on some engines. Forty-one's thirty years old, second out engine forty-three, seventeen years old, our service truck, sixteen years old. Uh, we're getting into the situation that the police department got in, where they had a lot of equipment that was worn out at one time. And we're gonna quickly be in that same boat. Uh, so we, we've got to begin planning for the replacement of forty-one as soon as we can, and we've got to develop a fleet replacement plan to where we're not stuck in these ruts. Uh, similarly, just at much, much higher cost than, uh, the PD's, uh, experiencing now. Uh, it is, there are avenues that we can look at as far as leasing, uh, different financing options. Uh, I will tell you that they are exorbitantly expensive. Uh, engine forty-one, which we bought thirty years ago, which was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars then, that fire truck will be about seven hundred thousand dollars today. And they are going up, uh, every year, Pierce, as a matter of fact, this month, Pierce Manufacturing had a thirty percent increase in their fire engine costs. Thirty percent, you look at thirty percent on something that costs that much, that's, that's huge. You just took a seven hundred thousand dollar truck, a million dollars, and you're waiting on two, two years about for delivery, if you, if you ordered one today. Uh, there are, um, because of fleet replacement programs that a lot of larger departments particularly have, you know, they're rotating their, their trucks out all the time. There are good used options out there, um, at a lot, a lot lots, a lot less cost, uh, it's very competitive though. Uh, because, you know, people want those trucks, they can get them now, and they don't have, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars to spend on a fire truck anytime they want to, so. Uh, there's a lot of options we can look at, but we've got to go down a road to, to where we can get to doing that. Uh, currently, uh, all our apparatus is hanging in there pretty well, we don't, we haven't had huge major things happen to them. Fortunately, uh, you know, Craig can do a lot of repairs on, uh, Alock, we'll see, he works for a repair company, he's handy with us to be able to help us out, but we've, uh, we've got to, we've got to get some fleet replacement going on. That's, that's my biggest recommendations for right now.
Got you.
Oh, you're welcome, any questions from anybody?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, um, what would happen to engine forty-one if we replaced it, what would you do with it?
It will be put into reserve status. Uh, that way, when, currently now, if, we've got two pieces of pumping apparatus, one of them goes out, we're down to one engine, that's all we've got. Uh, so it will be placed in a reserve status whenever we were, uh, doing service work on one of the other engines or whatnot. So it will be placed in a reserve status whenever we were doing service work on one of the other engines or whatnot. It would be moved up and put back into service as well as a frontline engine. And we would also, the ISO grading system, there's a lot of different parts to it that go into it. But we would receive credit for it as well as because we had a reserve engine at our department. So, but it would, it would still be providing additional credit force and use force. But it would, it would not be getting dumped on every single call. So, you know, it would still have usefulness to us. We could put it in the used market, but it's not going to buy anything. Nobody wants a 30-year-old fire truck. There's, it has no value in that capacity, but will still have great value to the department.
Anyone else?
Anything else? All right. Y'all, yep, anytime y'all do have a question about anything, feel free to call.
Can I have that ax?
Museum, library, cemetery?
Mr. Crawford had mentioned quite some time ago about some cemetery plots that was sold and was set up on a payment plan. And that he was going to contact the person and find out what his pleasure was. That did not happen. We ran across it again in the office a few weeks back. And so we called the gentleman and, and spoke to him. And I explained to him that a payment plan for, he actually had purchased four plots on a payment, non-existent payment plan. And no paperwork was ever signed, no deeds were ever drawn up. It was nothing except that he was told, okay, now you have a payment plan. And of which he, there was no provisions made for ever so much per month or ever so much per quarter or ever so much per year. No provisions at all were made. And he ended up at, at, over a course of years, paying $610 against a $6,000 bill.
How many years?
I don't know exactly, but it's, it's been a lot. It was VC before Carol.
When was the last payment made?
Oh, I don't, that had been discussed in previous meetings and I don't have it down here on this one, but it's been quite some time. But nonetheless, I contacted the gentleman, he was very, very nice about it all. I told him that no paperwork was ever drawn up, that I apologized, that he was given misinformation about a payment plan for cemetery plots that that never was anything that town of Ramstour had in place. And he completely understood everything. And I told him that where we were at on it, and I can find all of those answers that y'all just asked, I just don't have it with me. But he said that that was perfectly fine, that he would just like to have his $610 back. And I think that's a fair request. And so I had talked to Bob about writing a release agreement for him to sign at the same time. But I just wanted to get approval to cut that check and just give him this money back. And Bob's going to write us up a release agreement for him to sign. I mean, it never, there was never any other name on anything. So there's nothing to discuss with a spouse or anything else. There was never any other name, name except the one gentleman.
So we need a motion to refund plots 506, 7, 8, 9 and section 5 to the person that made arrangements to purchase them.
$610.
Benjamin Staley. Somebody want to pop up with that motion, please?
I make a motion that we refund Benjamin Staley in the amount of $610 that was paid towards section 5 plots, 506, 507, 508, 509.
Is there a second? Upon the condition he signed.
On the condition of him signing the release form.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Carol. Parks and Rec?
I was wanting to bring up Leonard Park because after the appointment of Commissioner Hatchett, she expressed interest in the ball fields and getting the up and running. And she is very excited about it and then doing so. She and I had a conversation and discussed it. And she's going to take Leonard Park and apart, you know, apart from Parks and Rec, she's going to take that portion and then I will stay with the lake.
Excellent. Ballfields?
Do you need vote on that?
Are the, are those positions voted on or?
Well, we, we.
I just take a motion.
Well, I make a motion that we place Commissioner Teresa Hatchett over Leonard Park.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Teresa?
Okay. Sorry. I spent a little time assessing the ball fields and we have some things that need to be taken care of at the ball field. And one of the main things right now is, and I don't know if this has been taken care of, there's a leak in the lower concession stand, at the lower concession stand that we need to have public works to work on, get to be fixed.
I think that leak has been there for many, many years and it's been shut off. And that's why we haven't used that lower concession stand in many, many years, like even before VC.
All right. So when I went into the ball, when I went into the concession stand, that water was coming out of a pipe inside the concession stand.
So there's water dripping?
Yes.
Is it coming from the roof?
No, it is coming from a pipe that's along the floor. It's a little pin, whole leak, but it's.
I thought the jury about it, he said the water was off over there.
I think the water's off, it might be some.
The toilets in the lower bathrooms need to be, the guts need to replace them. And we had cut the water back off because they were running constantly. So the water, the water was off.
Do you think there might be some drainage that's?
Possibly, we can get a look.
Yeah.
As far as, I'm, I'm about positive the water here is off from that building.
Brendan, were you sent a copy of this?
I want to see.
Jason, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Jason, you go send a copy of this, okay? Because there's a couple of things that need to be taken care of, but those things can be handled. I've had a couple of calls about the ball field and people wanting to use it. So I'm going to move forward in allowing them to use it. But I am working on a use of facility for them because we need to have a paper trail of who's using the ball fields and at what times. We have a calendar that's in there on the commissioner's desk now. And I will be putting that information on there. So if the, if ladies here were to get a call, they will know who's using the ball field at the, you know, particular times.
Carol, is there any way that that calendar can be put online on our website? It's something that I wanted to do a long time ago, but that we, we weren't able to do it many years ago, but can we do that now?
I do not know, I can ask about that.
That way anybody.
It might could go on the calendar that's already on there, that lists town meetings and everything else. I don't know if it could be a separate calendar, I don't know.
I know it might require additional page, which I think.
Yeah, it may cost more.
It's never had a policy before, use of it now.
We just had it part of our fee schedule.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, you know, get people getting angry about what these same times and everything.
Well, there's, yeah, there's some work that's got to be done to make sure things are, you know, in order. And everybody, you know, that anybody wants to use the field, if that time is available can, we just got to get those things set up. So, and we also need to talk about the fee schedule. We need to go back and revisit that as well, as far as lights are concerned. And, you know, we can do that at another time, but we do need to have a discussion about the charges.
We can do that in our budget meeting.
Okay. So that's pretty much it. If I can get those things taken care of over there at Leonard Park, we will be in good shape.
Said it?
Yes ma'am.
Joy?
I'm starting to look at purchasing John boats for the lake. And it's probably going to take me some time to come up with them and find a little bit of difficulty in finding them at this point. But I would like to go ahead and get the approval in place. So that way, when I do find them, I can snag them. So I'm asking for $10,000 to go toward boats. This is only looking at potential getting four, but the reason I'm going 10,000 is I'm looking at getting the motor, the battery packs, anything that is needed in addition to life jackets. I know there are some at the lake.
How much in your budget?
$39,000 in capital outlay.
In your budget from last year?
Oh.
Did you budget to purchase equipment?
Yep.
Thirty-nine thousand.
You.
In capital outlay, which was the boat, some of the boats.
Thirty-nine thousand is about how she's going.
It is.
That is.
It's, it's right here in the.
Do you know how much is in the Parks and Rec bank account?
It says right here.
What page is that?
Page 21, capital, capital outlay, 39,000.
That, I. I don't know that that's, we don't have that much money in the bank, I don't think.
It's not put in a separate banking account.
I know, but you should still have a Parks and Rec balance because the percent of tax dollars that goes in there is different. So it should have its own balance.
Then Bob's sitting on the dress at budget time.
Because any money left over has to go back into Park and Rec.
It goes right back into Parks and Rec.
The page before that tells the revenue totals that was expected to come in. I can look at that and see what's in the bank account if you want, recess and I'm running, getting them.
Yes, we got the fund balance appropriation of 88, 88. And then the revenues for the lake are 18,000 and the majority of that goes right back to pay the, the, the warden. Thank you. I understand what you're saying, I just, I, the Parks and Rec balance usually stays right around 40 to 45,000, depending on what you have brought in and what has been spent.
Right.
Based on the 3% of tax revenue. Now, it's going to go up next year, as everybody knows. But I just think that that number, that 39,000 for capital outlay is, it, that's going to wipe out your whole account or a big portion of it from savings account. That's why you got 30,000 coming from the savings account.
Pass it on contingents that her and Carol gets together and sees if the money's there instead of wasting more time going into the office.
And I agree with that. I would really encourage you to, to, to double check that because you don't want to wipe your whole balance out.
Right. And if it, if it becomes to where it's too costly, I'll ditch it for now. I mean, you know, you got to do.
Well, you may, you may want to just look at maybe buying one boat and what the cost it is. And then the next budget period, buy another boat.
Right. Well, then at this point, we do have one that was from last year, but it's still, I'm going to have the juvenile, kids from juvenile day reporting that come and do their community service. They're actually going to be the ones that are going to repaint the boat and make it nice. But I still want to get a motor for that one as well and I already have that. But we, I can, I can modify my wants according to what my budget is, what I can do. Because I, you know, I don't want to tap out that amount of money because there's, there's still a lot that's got to be done. I mean, in repairs, especially on the west side.
And, and you're going to have to figure out a split now because you're not over just the one department?
Correct.
How much money is going to filter to the ball field?
Right. I mean, you know, in that I have no problem with. I just, we all know that lake is going to take more money, you know, with the repairs that are needed because there's so many, you know, structure wise, there's more structures there that need to be taken care of.
The park's got a separate. It has a separate.
Leonard Park has a separate one than the lake?
Yeah.
We, we did do them separate last year.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, you're right.
So it's 14, 646.
And the expected revenues equal out.
And the lakeside are the?
For the total, the total revenues was for parks and recreation altogether, the 10295. And then if you look at the, the last page there, the expense totals for a part of, for the lake and part of it for the park, 10295.
Okay, Carol, could you break that down one more time so that I understand?
Which side? What page are you on?
Page 20 of 28.
Okay. And this is for the lakeside, correct?
This is for parks and rec altogether, your revenues. Your revenue totals was 10295.
Right, but that's pulling $30,000 from our savings account and a fund balance appro. What's the difference between a fund balance appropriation of 888, $8,888 and a 30,000 from the savings account? They're two different line numbers?
Yeah, and those things I can explain, but, because I don't know that, that's why we have Brendan that does the budgets. And, but I'm just saying that that 10295, then if you look on the expenses for the next page, the lake totals, budgeted total was 85, 625. Leonard Park budgeted total was 14, 670. And the two of them added together makes it 10295, which is expected revenue.
I think, Joy, going back to remember, we were looking at spending money to do the camping. So we were going to pull that out because we knew that there was going to be an increase in revenue once we got that. But we don't have that revenue. So I think we need to go back and look at, okay, how much money do you have in your account? And, and then look at how much you can spend without depleting your account. And that's one of those things when, and this was done way before Carol started, when we had somebody come in that took accounts that were separated. The enterprise account had its own bank account, Parks and Rec had its own bank account. And then you had your general fund. Well, we had somebody come in that combined them all and the only way to track it now is on a spreadsheet. And that's making it very difficult for Carol, for Jason, because he's in the same situation where he doesn't have that, that number. So we need to figure out how we can accurately get that number to you, which is coming when all the software gets done, correct, Carol?
Well, it's still not, I mean, Jason, for example, water and sewer was put together, that's one thing that is.
But that's the enterprise account.
Yeah. So it's not going to be separated back office to this much is water and this much is sewer.
No, no, it's just different from the general fund.
Yeah, but it's still in the same bank.
But it's still in the same bank. See how confusing that can be?
I think Park and Rec needs to have its own account, so we know.
Was that account ever closed officially?
No, it's still open, but there's no money that's went in in the past three years.
So.
Nothing has come out of it either.
And so I don't know how difficult that would be to do that, but that's something that it's just, it makes it confusing for everybody.
So is this something we can talk about during budget?
I think whatever we get budget wise, put that in, like the 3% next year goes into that.
You can talk about it at budget before action. You can talk about it at budget before action has to take place. It has to be done in the opening session. All right, so on the John boats, if you wanna go ahead and get costs and then get with Carol and see where we're at.
I mean, she... I don't wanna say anything wrong or mislead anybody, but she was talking about ten, not spending the whole thirty thousand or the whole thirty-nine thousand.
I just wanna make sure that it's in your, and you've got...
I make a motion that I'm approved for $10,000 contingent on the money being there without depleting that account.
What was the number?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten, you're still at ten.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Anything else, Joy?
Uh, no.
Administration required ARPA reports. And Carol sure has got a lot of emails on those.
Yes, absolutely. These five reports that I gave copies of. We went in. Debbie helped out and ran in and put the town of Ramster in and all the proper places, put the mayor's name in and all the proper places. And we've got to approve these five reports and put them into record because they have to go with the, they were for yesterday's meeting, but we have to do it. The, the form, the template for these comes straight from the school of government. We did compare it also with what the town visco did, which came straight from the school of government also, that their attorney down there put together their forms for them. And so we compared with that. And I asked Bob to look over it. At any rate, we gotta get it approved because we, it's getting too close to wait until next meeting. It's required.
It's gotta be filed by April thirtieth?
Yes, the, the whole report's gotta be done by April thirty, not just these going in, this is just a part.
I'll make a motion, we'll go ahead and approve it.
I'll second it.
Give us a second. I can't hear you ladies tonight, John will have to speak up.
Uh, Bob, and you've had a chance to review it?
Yeah, I think there's six policies supposed to be passed, but I thought I saw the financial, you know, went through, checked them all. I'll double check with Carol.
It was...
I think, I think you got them.
It was five, but there are some, some more forms. It was five that had, that was required.
Yeah.
But there's, uh, uh, another that town visco did that we're gonna look at doing, but we had to get these ready right now.
I thought I saw you had all, I think there's six, but they're all, it looked like they were all in there. I'll double check with Carol.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve the ARPA reports that are required by the state? Is that correct?
Yeah.
The motion is to approve the ARPA reports that are required by the state. J C's first, Joy's second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Website email contact list.
Um, we had received a, a email through the website, and so that causes us to take a little more look at that. Uh, the email addresses that was for the different departments on the website, not all of them were correct. Like, for example, it had an old museum, uh, email address, museum had never had an email address. We don't even have a computer to obtain emails. So anyway, we don't have that email address now. When we switched to Randolph Communications, we got rid of that email address, so we wouldn't even have to pay for it. So anyway, uh, what I gave to you there, proposing that the, the water department, that, well, the fire department stay like it is. Fire department, the town of Ramster, they wanted to get in touch with them through email. The police department, and this is not an emergency emails that they needed to send you. The police department, the same way, police department at town of Ramster. The town clerk, of course, town clerk, proposing the water department be water clerk at town of Ramster. Planted and zoning, I put Brendan's email, uh, contact email in there, which would match the same thing that's on the planted and zoning part on the website already. Uh, the library, that email, the town of Ramster is no longer existent either. So I'm proposing for her, that's her contact to email through Randolph County Library. Uh, museum, I'm not opposed to that being sent to the town clerk. Then somebody, if somebody sent a mu, uh, museum email, I would see it. It's not just going into oblivion. Uh, same way with the cemetery, somebody wanting to email about that to town clerk. So the questions I have is, do we want, want to put Jason or who down for Public Works? Uh, do we want to put Teresa or who down? Uh, no, that would be Joy, pardon me, well, Tristan, yeah, for Leonard Park, Joy for Ramster Lake, or who? So that's, that's the three that I have two questions about.
For succession purposes only, I would suggest that you either have it generic for Leonard Park at town of Ramster or Public Works at town of Ramster.
That costs more money on our emails.
It costs more money and it would be another email for them to have to check. It's easy enough to change it if, if, God forbid, Jason left us, we could change it and put somebody else on.
And the only reason I'm saying that is especially with the Parks and Recreation, when, when you've got that change in commissioner, somebody that might have old contact information, maybe you should just leave it at town clerk and you forward it. I know that's...
A lot more if people start using this more. It's not a problem to send an email to Randolph Communications. I sent one to Signal, because a planted and zoning board member did not want to use their town of Ramster email. They wanted to use their personal, and that's, that's their prerogative. And it's, their email is not publicized anyway. So I just sent Randolph Communications an email and told them to delete that. So it gets it off by a nickel, and then she can use her own email address.
Is it costing us anything if, you know, there's turnover, let's say, you know, change, commissioner changes in, um...
I think the only cost is the number of emails, right?
Mm-hmm, we'd be getting a, a new email for a new commissioner or whatever anyway.
It's just the number of addresses.
Whoever went out.
Okay, so you're gonna keep the same, pretty much the same amount of emails, you're just gonna change the name?
Yeah, it's just a matter of, do you wanna go through a bunch of red tape to finally get to the person that needs to go to? Or do you wanna let them email the person that needs to go to to start with?
I think it needs to go directly to the department person, whoever it is, so that they can deal with whatever. Because if there's something major going on and it's gotta go through Carol, maybe a couple of days before it gets to the, the person, the department.
Good, she, she gets it out right away, but I...
Maybe I'm gonna take the day off when these are...
Even on the weekend.
Yeah.
Um, whatever y'all wanna do. I just think, look, I like to look at succession, so, but whatever, if it's easy, it's just as easy for you to change?
Yeah.
I made a motion, we just go ahead and did it with who belongs for those departments.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Respect and workplace training.
Oh, was that a two?
Yeah, you're on the, you're on the next one, too.
What number did we just do?
Twenty-nine.
We just did number twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, month twenty-eight.
We're on twenty-eight now.
Sorry, let me get that one down. Twenty-seven, so now we're on twenty-eight. Okay, this is the training that we had said that was going to be done back last April, May, whenever it was. Uh, I had got in touch to find out how we could get respect in the workplace training. I tried, uh, there was two companies that was recommended by the attorney firm that was here working with us at that time. The one company never did respond back to me at all, but this one, uh, they, they were the number one recommendation anyway. And this lady did, Camille Manuel, she did correspond back to me. And I had sent out the process for that mail to you on January the twenty-sixth. I suppose I just missed getting it in the February lead. So at any rate, uh, she, per session is one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per session. And she recommends that a maximum of twenty-five employees, uh, come to each session. She can do up to, uh, well, it's a two-hour session, so she can do more than one in a day so that employees could rotate and be able to attend the training.
Is there tax on these? It's a service, is there tax on that service?
I don't know, it's about eight hundred and fifty dollars now.
Plus per damn.
She didn't say anything about tax.
That's a lot of money.
Close tomorrow.
Does the board wanna look at this? Do you wanna act on it? What's your pleasure?
I don't think we have the money to do it right now.
Do you just wanna table it?
I mean, that's, that's up to y'all.
Looking at contracted services and professional services.
You had said that it had to be done back last year. So it's, it's, you wanna push it to budget time.
So what is the cost? What are we looking at for this?
About two thousand dollars.
About two thousand dollars.
Five dollars per session. Uh, like I said, she could do two sessions in a day. So she, uh, and she would charge mileage also, um...
From Raleigh.
Which is sixty-two point five cents a mile, and she's coming from Raleigh.
Raleigh, I think, sixty-two miles.
Is this impeded on the work of the town and what we, what's gotta be done? You said this is, is this a must?
It, no, it was, it falls back in reference to, uh, the issue that we had last spring, when there was not respect in the workplace and that it was, uh, recommended at that time that training will be done.
And this would come out of... And this would come out of what budget?
Admin.
It would be admin, yeah.
We don't, uh...
It's contracted services. Do you have a page on that?
That's page four, I believe.
Page what, four?
Page four, you're looking at, we are in professional services, we have twenty-three percent left. And in contracted services, we, we're, we got, we, we spent ninety-five percent of that budget already.
And professional services, our attorney has not turned in a bill.
He likes surprises.
I've always been discussing it with you. But, I mean, this could come out of training. It doesn't have to come out of either one of those. J C, it could be not training.
Yeah.
Uh, which, that's where the situational training is coming out of, the training one.
We've got thirty-seven, fifty-seven there, and then, well, we got thirty-two, fifty-seven, twenty-five there.
We get along fine in the office, so my girls and I are fine. It's up to y'all about the training, like I say, it was...
I feel like it should be consolidated to the problem area where it all originated from.
It's not gonna make any difference on the cost, though.
It would if she only had to do one session instead of doing two in one day, would that not be correct?
Right, that's it.
You're still looking at about two thousand.
It's eight seventy-five a session, plus mileage, so that would be a thousand.
No, 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 no. It's seventeen fifty per session.
Per session?
Yeah.
So we're looking at four thousand per two, we're looking at four thousand.
You're looking about two thousand dollars per session.
Yeah, it's... I think we can remedy the problem that we're having already. But that's up to whatever y'all think.
What'd you say?
I think the problem can be remedied.
It can, most definitely can. There's always a solution. Let's table it.
Table?
Randolph County Partnership for Children.
I believe that's moving in. Uh, I spoke with a lady with a Randolph County Partnership for Children. They're wanting to get a presence in this area of the county. I believe this is something that J C works with in Randolph already. Uh, it's, it's a very good program, as I understand. She would like to have, uh, host a family circle here at the town hall for Ramster and Franklinville areas on April thirteenth. Uh, whenever we first talked, I told her some dates in April that were not available. Uh, you know, our board meeting dates and, and planted and zoning will be here Saturday and so forth. And so they picked April thirteenth, which is free as far as I can tell, uh, from five-thirty to seven. Uh, we did talk about, she said that they would like to have facilities for supervised. We don't have to provide anything but the building, but for supervised with the children to perhaps play at a front playground or something. And so I told her that, you know, if you use town facilities, if you went to Leonard Park or over to the lake, something like that, it would consist of taking them somewhere. And I suggested to her that perhaps they could use the facilities at the church, that was right here. Uh, whenever she sent me the, the follow-up email, then she mentioned, is there a place if it were to be raining bad weather? Is there a place where they can do like board games or something like that inside while Partnership for Children is meeting with the parents, you know, for the actual children themselves? Uh, I did speak whenever I stepped over to the church this afternoon. I did speak with, uh, Pastor Chris, and they, he has not been officially contacted yet. I just kinda mentioned it to him, and he said that they would love to do the children in the fellowship hall if that's what was needed. The playground was for the children anyway, and so that would be perfectly fine for them to use that. And so if, if we can allow the parents to be in this room here for that meeting at that time.
Do they know how many people that they think will attend?
Uh, between twenty-five to forty individuals, and that does include the children.
I'm wondering if the library might be something that you could consider, too?
Uh, what was the name that we go over?
Because of the late, the lateness of the hour?
Uh, all they would want to use is the boardroom up there, and it is what? That's much space of this room, not.
And I don't know if you can rent it after hours, neither.
I don't know, and we're not talking about renting, I mean, this is...
Well, yeah, I mean, if you... I think it's a good idea. Like I said, they're part of Safe Kids, which I'm co-coordinator on Safe Kids, and they do help Safe Kids out a lot. And I, I think anybody, any organization that can, you know, this building's not being utilized, so I, I don't see a problem.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we'll go ahead and let them use it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The announcements are on there, let's go ahead, and if we want to...
I don't know, we skipped one of them.
No, he, he...
No, he addressed it.
He addressed it.
I missed that altogether.
It's this Saturday. No, we don't, we, we've already voted on one.
As long as there was no motion there, thank you.
Uh, I make a motion, we adjourn and go into closed session after a few minute recess.
I'll second it.
For personnel illegal.
Thank you. All in favor? All in favor?
JC.
I hope y'all had a wonderful closing meeting and, yeah.
Hey, is Diane?